Hello everyone. My name is Sarah Melvin.
David and I, yes.
I think we're in alphabetical order though, so that's right.
Are we alphabetically ordered?
Quiet now, please, thank you. I have the pleasure of moderating this evening's forum. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I'd like to welcome everyone and remind you that there are cookies and treats in the back of the room and they have so many they want you to be helping yourself throughout the forum. Thank you to our sponsoring co-hosts and we'd like to hear a word from one of them, the Duluth PTSA's Stacy DeGroot.
I just want to welcome everybody here tonight on behalf of the Duluth PTSA Council. If you're not familiar with PTSA Council, we're supporting for the local PTAs for our school district and we are happy to welcome everybody here tonight and welcome our candidates here tonight and thank you all for coming.
And also another co-sponsor this evening is the Lakeside-Lester Park Community Club and they would like to offer their welcome.
Welcome to all of you. We hope that you get a lot of information tonight. We're very proud of this forum. We thank the League of Women Voters for always taking care of this for us and doing an excellent job in it and I hope our candidates enjoy the professionalism that is displayed tonight.
Okay, thank you. And we also, another co-sponsor is the Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation and they participate with their civility project certified event information which you have just received and we'll call their attention to that in a minute. The League of Women Voters is pleased to present this general issues pre-election forum for the second district and at-large candidates running for the Duluth School Board. Thank you candidates for your willingness to participate in local government and in these forums. At this point, we would like to ask everyone to turn off their cell phones. The League of Women Voters believes that informed citizenry is the foundation of an effective democracy. The League is open to membership for men and women who are interested in non-partisan civic participation and you're all invited to join us. For more information, you can check our website which is www.lwvduluth.org. You can pick up membership forms or talk to any members. Those who are interested in finding information about same-day voter registration, your voting district, your polling place, et cetera, we can help you with that as well back at our information table. And please remember to exercise your right to vote in the election which is Tuesday, November 5th. Because the League of Women Voters has always structured our forum in a way that promotes civility, this is a civility certified event. And here is Kathryn Linz to say a word on that.
Thank you. This evening, you received some materials from Speak Your Peace, the Civility Project. One is the green card that lists the nine tenants of civility. On the white sheet is a list of expectations of you, the audience members. As the forum proceeds, Speak Your Peace, the Civility Project is an initiative of the Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation and the League of Women Voters Duluth. The Foundation and LWV Duluth would like to thank in advance the candidates and you as audience members for your cooperation.
Thank you Kathryn. The League of Women Voters, as you know, is a non-partisan volunteer organization that works at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we as a League do study and take stance on issues, we do not endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed at tonight's forum are those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters Duluth. At this time, I'd like to introduce our candidates. Running for the second district seat are David Kirby and Harry Welty. And the second district, the second district consists of precincts three plus eight through fourteen. If you're not in one of those, you still want to listen to these gentlemen because one of them will be on the school board. And our at-large candidates, we can all vote for one there, are Alana Oswald and John Schutman. So they're not seated in order by district here, but you got that straight? Our forum tonight will begin with the candidates giving a two-minute opening statement followed by the questioning round. Please note our timers right here in the front row. First to be asked are questions that have been solicited and vetted by our organizing committee. These will be followed by questions from audience members and questions received on our website as time allows. Candidates were not given the questions in advance and each candidate will have a minute and a half in which to provide a response to our questions. The questioning round has been set up so that each candidate will be asked a question in rotating order and the order in which candidates will respond was determined at random and we're going to rotate those responses throughout the evening. So nobody goes first every time. We would like to encourage audience members to submit questions of their own if you desire. Index cards were provided at the door and they're available, so just raise your hand. Someone will give you an index card and raise your hand again and they'll pick it up. Our volunteers will collect them. Also vetted questions will be assessed for clarity and bias. Those that fall into the same general category will be consolidated. This will allow us to cover as many topics as possible. Questions that are being unfair, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used and all questions become property of the League of Women Voters. After the questioning round is completed, then each candidate will be allowed a one-minute summary at the end of the forum. So the candidates will now present their two-minute prepared introductory statements. And the first to speak drawn by cards is Mr. Kirby.
Thank you. I didn't know it was supposed to be prepared, but I will thank you all for coming and thanks for whoever made the cookies. I'm going to have those afterwards. My name is David Kirby. For those of you who might not know me, I am a current member of the school board representing District Two and running for reelection. I've been involved in the schools for 12 years. I have two children who are still in school, both at East, one a sophomore and one a senior. And during their school careers, I've been involved, as many parents are, volunteering in the schools, PTA meetings, and all of the rest of it, carting them off to various activities. I also have a doctorate in education and so prior to being on the school board, I was involved in an academic fashion, teaching at the university level for several years. I then stopped that and became a physician and retired as a family physician after 35 years, about five years ago. Now, why am I running? Well, because of that, I still have kids in the school and am interested in this. People have asked me to run, both in my district and in the community as a whole. And as I've said on many occasions, I want to see Duluth prosper, all of Duluth, and part of that means that we need a strong public school system. People come to Duluth and they stay in Duluth for a lot of reasons, but a strong public school system is one of them, just like good roads, no potholes, good medical care, things like that. So we need to do that. Schools are a community asset and I see that the money spent on them as an investment rather than as a cost and I'd like people to look at that. Even for people who don't have children or grandchildren in the schools at this point in time, you are affected by them and I encourage you to support them. Thank you.
Okay, our second candidate is Mr. Welty.
I'm Harry Welty. I describe myself to many people as being a bad penny who just can't stay away from elections. This is my 17th attempt to win public office and the good people of Duluth have seen fit to put me on the Duluth School Board for a period of 12 years, like Mr. Kirby, Dr. Kirby. My lineage in the Duluth schools goes back way, but just maybe double that age because I came up to Duluth to teach in Proctor and by 1980, I was doing some substitute teaching in the Duluth schools. And I have to say, my early teaching career was not much of a success, but I'm one of these people, like those bad pennies who just won't stop. But you remember, gotta remember, who's on that penny? Abraham Lincoln, he was famous for losing all sorts of things and then he cemented the nation back together again. And I think we need to do that in the Duluth schools as well. We've had a nation, we've had a school district that has been at odds with itself and I've been a part of that. I'm sorry that we didn't get a chance to vote on a big plan and it was a plan that basically traded 100 teachers, $10 million worth of salary for new schools. And the source of a lot of, most of our problems now is the fact that we're just understaffed, huge classrooms. Now, I have a good sense of humor even though I also have a bit of a fighting spirit and it's the good attitude I have that I think will be well-used if I should be re-elected to the school board. I know a lot about this district because I've been around for a long time. I've always liked Western Duluth even though I reside in Eastern Duluth and finding equity between our children is our biggest goal. Hopefully we'll find a good superintendent that will help us get there.
Thank you. Mr. Schwetman.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters for the invitation to this evening's candidate forum and the opportunity to share our views with you. And I also want to thank the Lakeside Community Club. It was so great to see the kids playing in the back of the room earlier today. After-school program for kids who aren't able to participate in key zone in the school and really symptomatic of one of the great things about our community which is that we have an actively engaged community that's genuinely committed to the kids and organizations like this one crop up to serve the needs of kids, which is, I really appreciate that and appreciate the Lakeside Community Club for hosting us here today. My name's John Schwetman and I teach at the University of Minnesota Duluth. I've been doing that for 20 years, so I have the disposition of a teacher of sorts and I am running for, like I say, Duluth School Board at Large. If elected, I will prioritize equitable access to quality education across the district in each and every school, excellence in academic programs from pre-K to continuing ed, from college prep to applied trades, and also continuing improvements to direct community engagement with our schools, which includes something as concrete as just better transportation and pedestrian and bicycle access to our buildings that facilitate that. So I'm really concerned, I'm really, that's another reason why I wanted to mention the community club's active engagement with our kids. In building my campaign, on work I have done on two operating levy campaigns, once in 2013 and once in 2018, in order to advocate for passage of a local operating levy, I had to get out into the community and make the case for our schools and I kind of got in the habit of doing that and I'm interested in continuing that work as a candidate for Duluth School Board at Large. Our district has an awful lot to be proud of, great teachers, great paraprofessionals and other staff and I hope we can build upon that to continue to have strong schools and rally the committee behind the important work that our schools are doing.
Thank you. Candidate Oswald.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'm a mom. I'm a mom of two kids. One graduated in 2018 from Denfeld, the other one is a senior at Denfeld currently. I am the daughter of a hard-working person that worked at Diamond Tool and US Steel before that and I've lived in West Duluth all of my life in the same house, which is quite unusual. I have the same phone number, landline, as when I came home from the hospital. It's quite interesting. It's led to some very interesting phone calls from people. Other than that, I am very passionate about education and what's right and what's fair for people. That led me to a career in getting my teaching license in graduate school in 2007 because I was inspired to become a teacher after working in the schools with administration as an AmeriCorps Vista and running reading partner programs and learning all about Title I and Title and federal funds. I then went on to substitute teach in the district a lot and I also worked in the Education Equity Department and I've continued to work on equity issues. I also am the person responsible for the $300,000 investment in our curriculum as I was proven right by then Commissioner Brendan Casellius at MBE that we weren't teaching science and social studies as we should have and that led the district to adopting $300,000 more into our curriculum and practically saved our social studies department and I've been credited with that by social studies teachers. I want to be a, your school board member because I want to continue fighting for what's right for everybody and not everybody has the best experiences, but I'm the person that most people call when they don't have a good experience so I can help re-engage them and get them to a resolution that's acceptable. And I celebrate everything we do and I volunteer everywhere I can. I regularly volunteer at Homecraft and at Denfeld and anywhere else I'm asked.
Thank you candidates. To begin the question and answer portion of tonight's forum, we'll start with those questions solicited and submitted by the organizing committee. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to respond. Let's begin with kind of a general question first. What do you see as the role of a school board member vis-a-vis the district administration and the other school board members? We'll begin with candidate Oswald.
My role as a school board member is to engage my community that I represent, which is all of the city and the townships, and get as much feedback as I can from various people. Then I need to take that to my fellow school board members who we have to engage and compromise in productive discussion and come to some kind of consensus on what we're going to do and however we vote, we vote and the majority wins and we move on from there. We also celebrate together and, you know, have a good time together. It's quite fun when we're all getting along and that's been my experience the last couple of years. As far as the administration, we are a governing board and we have one employee, the superintendent. And so, yes, we can agree with the superintendent and what he wants to do, but there are times when we have to direct the superintendent to do what the board wants and then when I take that role seriously, that's also meaning what the community wants because the community should be driving what the board decides.
Thank you. Next to answer the same question, Mr. Schwetman.
Thank you. The role of a school board member is very important. The public schools are the one large institution that teaches children in our city that is funded exclusively, well, one that's funded, both funded by public taxpayer dollars but also then accountable to the taxpayer through the mechanism of the school board, which of course is elected by you all. Very important work that we do. And the basic job of a school board member, as I see it, is to facilitate communication or to be kind of an intermediary really between the administration of the district and the general public. And that can take on many different forms. And so part of that work then is to, and I think we see this, to represent the needs of a public that doesn't agree with itself is also to bring those disagreements then into the school board meetings. Disagreement is not a bad thing. Disagreement is productive and disagreement, and good disagreement, productive disagreement is a way we can weed out the surface disagreements and get down to the real core issues. And I've been involved in these kinds of processes and other boards and I'm always excited to see it when it works. The school board also sets the budget for the district as a whole, a very important work. And then also, of course, as we'll see in the coming months, hires a superintendent and continues conversations with that superintendent as part of that representative work. So the school board is, really has a very complex task ahead of it because the district is so large and bound by so many different statutes at different levels. It really does help, I think, when the school board can take that very complicated institution and render it as something intelligible to the larger public.
Thank you. Candidate Kirby, the same question.
Thanks. Well, the school board has two things it has to do by statute. One is hire a superintendent and the other is pass a budget. That's what we're supposed to do. Each individual school board member by themselves has no authority or power. We only govern as a majority. So you have to get a consensus on the board and get a majority for what you would like to do. This is sometimes difficult, but I think that it's what we all have tried to do and as Mayor Oswald said, I think in the past several years, we've been better at doing this. We do not administer. We are a board that sets policy. So we don't hire anybody but the superintendent and we try and direct through our policies what the administration should do and it's up to us to hold the administration and the superintendent probably most directly accountable for this. I think that the public sometimes gets frustrated by the fact that we don't do, we don't act more like a senate committee or even the city council. That's not our job. So that's my answer.
Okay, thank you. And candidate Welty.
My grandfather went to Columbia University from a little podunk college in Kansas in 1950 to get a master's degree in history because his desire was to become a school superintendent. And with an Ivy League education, he thought he could do it. He got waylaid by World War, one became a war hero instead, so that didn't pan out. But in looking at old newspapers about how superintendents at school used to win elections in little Kansas towns, I have an appreciation for the history of this. Sometimes if one wanted to be cynical, you could say, you need a school board so that somebody could be blamed for everything that doesn't go right in the schools. The state legislatures have so carved up the laws and the rules that basically we're just there to make sure that the administration, which is huge now compared to when my grandfather wanted to be a superintendent and he would have been the one administrator, it's very difficult to make a lot of changes. When we go out looking for a school superintendent over the course of the next few months, we really have to, we have to find the right one. I joked today at an earlier conference when somebody asked me what I wanted, I said I wanted Elizabeth Warren. We need somebody who's a good communicator, somebody who's transparent, and somebody who has ideas. And even as short as we are of money, we can do good things for our community and our children.
Thank you. Actually, segueing into the next question, Mr. Welty. What do you see as the most important qualities in the next superintendent?
Elizabeth Warren.
You know, I've served under three superintendents and I crossed swords with Mr. Dixon, Dr. Dixon, because I was upset that the community didn't get a vote on the red plan that had the terrible economic consequences of laying off lots of teachers. They were all very different personalities. I don't think there's any one set personality that will work, but you need somebody who's honest, who you can trust, and I'll be looking for somebody like that whose record indicates that they were trusted by the people who worked with them in a school, which is presumably where they'll be coming from, another superintendency, maybe a smaller town. Somebody who's got some vision, somebody who's got patience, because school board members can be troublesome people. And I incline myself to be very helpful to a superintendent of schools. Now, sometimes that's tough, but you have to support this person because sometimes the school board needs to take the flak instead of a superintendent. And if you have a superintendent and a school board who are trading insults and pointing at each other, you've got a dysfunctional system and I'll be working on making sure we have a very functional system should I be re-elected.
Thank you. The same question, the next superintendent to candidate Kirby.
Thanks. Well, I think that we have a process in place right now, it's still early, to select our new superintendent. We need this to be quite transparent, which I think it will be, and we need a lot of community involvement, which we are going to have, I hope. At least we're going to try. That being said, as we say now, the final decision will rest with the board. We want to get as much input as we can, but the public should realize that the seven board members will make the final decision. The candidate that we get, from I hope a large number of candidates, should be a good communicator, should be able to listen, should be able to learn. If they're not from this area, which I don't know who will show up, who will show up to be interviewed, but they're going to need to know about Duluth as they would about any community that they're going into. They're going to have to be able to take suggestions or criticisms. There's lots of those, no matter where you are in schools. And I think they have to be able to work with a variety of personalities, both in the administration that they have and on the school board. We're a disparate group of people who generally get along, but we have different personalities. So those are the qualities I look for.
Thank you. Candidate Oswald.
Thank you. I agree with everything everyone else said. You know, we need a transparent decision-maker, who's a good communicator and explaining things to a community and someone that embraces community and community involvement. I want a leader that will offer support to our many employees rather than anything like top-down. I would rather have a team player that's engaged in our schools and trying to improve them in a state of continuous improvement that we expect all of our schools to be in anyway. We should do that as a district. I also feel that we need to expand the search beyond Minnesota because Minnesota is coming in way down in 49th and 50th place in different aspects of education such as with the opportunity gaps and the education gaps that exist. And I feel that we can get some fresh people and fresh perspective from other places that may have more success than we do in the areas that we're struggling in because that is what we want to do, is improve where we struggle while maintaining what we do good and trying, even trying to improve what we do good, better. There's always room for improvement. So I hope that we get a great selection of candidates, kind of like we did for filling a former member Gorm seat and that we find the right match.
Thank you. Candidate Schwetman, the next superintendent.
Thank you. I had a couple, I wrote a couple of things down and this will be a little bit of repetition of what some other people said. First thing that comes to mind is we want a superintendent who's a really good communicator and someone who's actually, this is really hard, but I think superintendents sometimes have to tell people things that they don't want to hear because superintendents are leading this large district and to be good superintendents, they're going to have to make decisions on occasion that are going to make people very angry. They're going to be trading off really difficult dilemmas and I think that's part of the job. And I think that's why we are sometimes very, we pay a lot of attention to our superintendent's decisions and communication styles. I hope the next superintendent is eager to empower our excellent teachers and staff. There's a great, great potential out there and I think they're already doing great things, but it'd be nice to see, it'll be nice to see that the next superintendent continues to build upon their strengths and give them autonomy to make the decisions that they know best to make when they engage in the work of teaching and taking care of our children. I'm hoping the next superintendent has a good history of work with a unionized workforce and a commitment to the collective bargaining process. I mean, that's not going to be hard because most school districts around are unionized, but I do want to see that they have a work relationship with and an investment in that very important process. And then of course, I'd like to see a superintendent who is ready to adapt to Duluth. Duluth is, has its own qualities, its own characteristics as a community and it's dangerous to come in with preconceptions, I suspect, and I'm hoping that whoever was hired is ready to take that on.
Thank you. And Mr. Schwetman goes first on the next question. What resources or programs do you believe need to be enhanced to address the achievements and graduation disparity among different groups of students?
All right. Well, that's a, I mean, that's a really excellent question and one that I know well because I've had some conversations with it, about it, would be the Full Service Community Schools Program which exists at Myers Wilkins, at Lincoln Park Middle School, and at Denfeld High School. Really neat program because it started at the Duluth level and really at the earliest level and it built itself not by consulting outsiders, but really is brilliant. They built this program by talking to the parents of kids who are struggling, who are likely to suffer on the lower end of the achievement gap. My sense is that the Full Service Community Schools Program has been quite successful in improving academic performance among at-risk population and they did it brilliantly by asking, by finding ways to get the parents to come to the school and talk to them and level with them about what they needed. And one, the great thing is about Full Service Community Schools, actually it's a national program and it emphasizes a multi-pronged approach. It's not merely classroom intervention. Full Service Community Schools is looking at what's happening outside of the classroom, after school, and in the lives of the household, the kids and their households. That's only three schools. I'm seeing lots of other excellent programs out there, but the Full Service Community Schools obviously, it comes to mind. I think any program that exploits the unique qualities of the community around a school is worth looking into. I don't want to see a cookie cutter approach to this problem across the district. I like when we have programs that acknowledge individual characteristics of the populations that a school is serving.
Thank you. Candidate Oswald.
Thank you. I believe that there are interventions that are being performed at most schools. Depending on their budgets, they Depending on their budgets, some schools are able to offer more interventions than others, and that's a problem, so we need more money to expand the ability for students to be identified and to participate in different interventions. We also can expand our check and connect program that is offered to students of color at Denfeld in a special ed program. We expanded that by adding another teacher this year. There are still more that we can do, and that has proven to increase the graduation rates for some Black and African-American students and also American Indian and Native students. We also need to get employees that are reflective of our student population. We don't have enough role models of color within our schools. For teachers specifically, it's very hard. I believe, you know, there was only a handful of teachers of color that graduated from teacher preparation programs last year. There's not a lot of options out there, so we have to get creative, support staff, many other staff. We have our teaching pathways programs that's attracting and growing our own, but that's going to require some union bargaining memorandums of understanding. And our community partnerships beyond our community schools, they definitely enhance what we can do and how we can do it in access for students that may not have it otherwise.
Thank you. Candidate Welty.
As a matter of fact, Alana was a student of mine at Morgan Park out west, a long time ago. She put up with me for a year, and those, all sort of two years, all my frailties and foibles. I was very pleased when I discovered that she had worked very hard, making administration unhappy, making sure that her children got to have science at Lord MacArthur, where they went to school. She has been a godsend as far as pushing equity issues. We recently fairly distributed compulsory education, and Alana spearheaded that goal. Now, it's been done, and we still have a great deal of inequity, because when we carved up the town with the new school system, one side was, got a high school that was very small, and it's very difficult to offer the same kind of programming when you have a much smaller group of students and teachers. So we need to get the community involved, and I'd like us to try some experimentation. A lot of people say, "We should have gotten to one high school." I don't think it was politically possible, but maybe what we could do is treat our system like a unitary system, and even though we have two campuses, the kids can move back and forth between them and take advantage of coursework that's not available in the other course. I don't know how it'll be done. It'd be a lot of money for gas mileage, but those are the kind of things I think we need to do to make sure we bring that equity about.
Thank you. And candidate Kirby.
Thanks. Well, several things have been mentioned. I think the Community School Collaborative was described, and that's one of the programs that's really working. And the Teach Your Own program that member Oswald mentioned is starting out. It's a new program, and we have to give that time to grow, but I think there were, last I checked, seventy-four teachers of color in the state that graduated. And so how are we going to get them to come to Duluth? Well, we can try, and we do try, but we need to do that. I think that one of the things that we really need to do is get more collaboration with city, county, and state organizations. The schools, there was a study published, just recently mentioned in the Washington Post today, that poverty was by far the biggest predictor of success in school, by far. All those other things were little. Now, can the school do away with poverty? No, it can't. We can provide lunch. We can provide breakfast. We can provide meals in the summer. We can do things, but we can't have people read to their kids at night. We can't have people make sure that their kids are doing homework. There's a limit to what we can do. We can't do away with homelessness, but it's a huge problem. It's a problem at Congdon. There are probably just about as many homeless kids at Congdon as there are at many of our other schools. So it's a big problem, and I think that collaboration with other levels of government and getting the community involved is what will really, really help.
Thank you. Next question. Is the racial, ethnic, and gender makeup of our educational staff more representative of the students they serve? If not, what can be done? Beginning with candidate Kirby.
Well, I just mentioned the Teach Your Own program. It's a problem, and not only a problem with this district, I think it's a problem statewide. It's a problem nationally. So we can encourage, we can do professional development, and I think that's a large part of the answer. That takes cooperation from the teachers, teachers, and they are very cooperative. They're very interested in this. I don't think we're going to spend our way out of this or into this. It's going to take education. It's going to take cooperation from the communities where the schools are and getting more efforts, if we can do that, to go to places where there are staff and people of color or people who want to come here. We have to have them welcoming environments when they get here, both in the school and into the community where they'll live, because people aren't going to spend all of their time in the school. They have other things to.
Thank you. Candidate Welty.
It's going to be difficult. As a school board member, I was frustrated that our administration didn't seem to put enough effort into finding minority teachers. But as Dr. Kirby said, you know, if a state as big as Minnesota graduated seventy-four African-American teachers, well, there are hundreds, hundreds of school districts that would want to snap them up to represent their kids. I have an interesting background, because I went to school in Topeka, Kansas. You've probably heard of Brown versus Board of, Topeka Board of Education. In my sixth grade class, I was actually a minority white kid in the class. I think there were fourteen white kids and sixteen black kids and a Native American. And then I came to Minnesota, and my schools were all white. And Duluth had a few African-Americans, not very many. One of them, I helped get elected to the school board when I got elected, Mary Cameron, because I felt we needed some minority people for kids in the community to see. And she was always frustrated that we weren't finding people. Well, we may have a tough time recruiting them, but I've made it an effort to get to know the, at least the African-American community and members of the Native American community, and while that's a sad substitute for finding representatives of their communities to be teachers, it's a start, and that's what I can tell you right now.
Thank you. Candidate Oswald.
Thank you. How do we get more staff of color? Well, what's in the board's control is policies, and I know that we have some policies that have inherent systemic challenges and barriers that, you know, inhibit the hiring of staff of color, in particular, some of our HR policies that are being addressed and have been addressed as to how we review applications and score them from different people and the different requirements we ask. We have recruitment strategies. If there's only seventy-four, you know, teachers of color graduating, why aren't we talking to each of those seventy-four people individually? I mean, if it has to get that specific, it has to get that specific, but when we contact them, we need to know that we're inviting them to a community that welcomes the diversity and the cultures that they represent, have a place of being that's embraced. And Duluth lacks in a place to celebrate those different cultures at different times. You know, we don't have strong places for gathering for our Hispanic populations or African-American populations that necessarily just celebrate being and where they come from and where they should go, and that they're wonderful people in our community that thrive. So I think we need to work with our communities to attract them also. They'll come if they know they have a place where they belong.
Thank you. Candidate Schwetman.
Yeah, the problem of a lack of racial, ethnic, and gender diversity of staff is a problem in Duluth. It's a problem in a lot of school districts, and I think actually to adopt a different stance on it, part of the issue is curricular, actually. For most of American history, our official curriculum has been one that has said that one particular racial and ethnic and gendered group was better than all of the others. And any kid who was not part of that group was subtly or not so subtly told that they weren't of the same status by teachers at the front of the room historically, and I'm talking about America at large. We've done an awful lot as educators in the university, but also in the K-12 system, to confront this problem directly, and one of the best ways to do it is through curriculum. Change the curriculum, de-center the Western canon, de-center the Western white, European, American kind of ethnicity as dominant, and start really taking the non-European and non-male cultures seriously in curriculum. I know that, I think this district has taken this issue very seriously. There was a revision to curriculum just a couple of years ago in response to community feedback on this point, and it was one that actually people talked to me about because I teach English at the university and that I generally supported. But we can still make a lot more changes to curriculum to take the experiences of all of our different kids and make them central and not say that one is more important or more central to the story of America than another.
Thank you. Next question. Do you support changes being made in disciplinary procedures to keep more students in school rather than suspension? First, Mr. Schwetman.
I, this is a really important issue, and my understanding is when you do a breakdown by, this is a national issue again, you do a breakdown by race in terms of how likely a kid is to be suspended or kicked out of school or arrested, and the numbers are wildly out of whack. Clearly, under similar circumstances, African-American kids in particular, Latino-American kids, Native American kids are getting disproportionately sent home, and it's actually shocking how much this happens nationally at the younger level. And we're talking about very young children being kicked out of school for a day or a week because of an infraction. I'm not saying that this is, if this is happening at Duluth level, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't make that unique. So I feel very strongly that, I think we've changed a lot as a culture. We're no longer, we don't no longer have schools run by people with long rulers smacking kids on their hands for infractions. We've gotten away from that, thank goodness, but we still have a lot of work to do. And of course, I think there's a lot of work we can do to train in cultural sensitivity in our staff, and there's a lot of work to do just to facilitate compassion. That kid who's a problem for a teacher or a staff member for a day might have a lot going on, and maybe a different approach than the whacking ruler, which I'm not saying that's happening here, but a compassionate approach can turn a suspension into a timeout in the hallway and a more compassionate approach. So I feel really strongly that this is a room for improvement in all of our schools around the country, and undoubtedly, there's some work on that to be done here as well.
Thank you. Candidate Oswald.
Well, Mr. Schwetman talked about nationally. I'll talk about Duluth. Duluth was one of the forty-three schools districts cited for disproportionate discipline and for students of color, and we are on a corrective action plan to where we have to do certain things, like revise our policies, run things by the Minnesota Department of, I think it's Human Rights or Civil Rights, I forget which one it is. And that they are in control with how we approach it, and yes, keeping kids in school is where you learn. You don't want to have them outside of school, but in school, you also can't have disruption that disrupts learning for everyone. So there has to be a different practice of how education is delivered for those kids that are struggling, that can't be around other kids. A lot of times, these practices in unfair disciplines target students of special ed populations, because we have had to cut so many special ed staff and programs, and we don't have adequate space in our schools for certain kids that just can't handle being with a lot of other kids. And we're actually bringing them back. That was part of our budget that we just passed, where we're bringing back Level Three classrooms rather than, and in my time, my first year on the board is when we cut Level Three classrooms, and I spoke against it, because those kids need those extra supports to be successful. And our education system is about supporting all of our kids with what they need, and that's our job, and that's what we're supposed to do, because everyone's entitled to their education.
Thank you. Candidate Kirby.
Well, I'm old enough to have undergone corporal punishment in school. I remember a paddle in John Marshall Junior High School in Seattle, Washington. I think I was walking too fast in the locker room. I don't know, I don't think that goes on here, although I've been told in the olden days in some of the schools here it did. But I think that things have changed. The principal, former principal at Lincoln Park told me this summer about restorative justice practices that are going on there and how helpful they are. I think that sensitivity training that's been mentioned is good, and professional development of the teachers. There are some students who present problems, and the teachers have to be safe as well, and so it's a difficult task at times to protect the paraprofessionals and the teachers and yet be conscious of what the students have in their background, where they come from, and how to deal with all of this. So as member Oswald mentioned, we are looking at this in our policies and trying to improve our statistics, which I believe have been over the past year.
Thank you. Candidate Welty.
Well, I don't want Dr. Kirby to get bragging rights on me, so I have to tell you that Mr. Ray just gave me a big swat in front of all of the kids in the hallway when I was in fifth grade, so I've been there too. And we don't really use corporal punishment anymore, and good, good riddance. You know, we're talking about our minority population. There is so much unfamiliarity among the larger white population with minorities, and it leads to preconceived notions and prejudice and frustration, and it's minority kids, especially African-American kids who suffer from that, and our Native American kids too. And suspension becomes the default way of dealing with somebody who's loud for reasons that are probably perfectly understandable, but that perhaps a teacher doesn't see because they don't know their background. Well, I'm going to muddy the waters a little bit by something that has troubled me. We have an African-American principal who's about to be under suspension, and it's made the front-page headlines, and I got to say, I led, I read the instructions to her from her supervisor, and they were like the instructions of a white teacher to a black child about minding his business, not interrupting. We have a lot of white cluelessness all the way around, and it's hurting minority kids.
Okay, thank you. What current and/or additional support systems are needed to assist children who are experiencing homelessness? Candidate Welty.
I gave a speech about a month ago in the campaign to a group of people, and I had heard just before that that supposedly we have two-hundred-and-forty-six homeless kids in Duluth. Maybe not all at once, but over a period of time, I've talked with Alana, and she says it's probably considerably more than that. And I have a wife that volunteers at CHUM and sees families coming in and homeless children, and I serve food at the domino center, and I see little kids coming in that I don't think have places to live, maybe cars or maybe hotel rooms or crashing on some friendly person's couch. This is, this is a dreadfully difficult situation. We have kids at Life House, older kids who have a place of sorts. We need to do everything we can to make sure that if a child finds their way to a school, that we do everything we can to make sure that that child gets to stay at that school, doesn't get moved all around because of the transparency of the parents. And I would love to see the community have people who kind of watch over children in these circumstances so that they have a rooting section, so that no matter where they go, they always have somebody monitoring them, so that they don't become rootless and lost.
Thank you. Candidate Kirby.
If I had an answer, or if everybody had an answer, I think we'd be using it. It's a difficult problem. As I mentioned earlier, I think that the school does make every attempt to have the original school where the homeless student was registered stay there, and they have programs to get them there. I think this is a city-county-state problem as well, and I know that some of the city council people are very interested in affordable housing, and we need to do this. Churches, nonprofits can get involved. It's a community effort that's going to make big inroads. We can provide meals. We can provide some after-school programming, but after that, it's very, it's very difficult. So I, again, say, I think that a community-wide effort to solve this is what's needed. The schools are not going to solve it by themselves, and as much as they try to support it, it probably isn't going to be enough.
Thank you. Candidate Schwetman.
Yeah, I don't, I need to learn more about various specific programs insofar as they may exist. I know, of course, that we have a federal mandated school lunch program, which is of direct interest. It's a super smart idea, if you think about it, to just give kids food. It's, it's a super smart idea, if you think about it, to just give kids food in their stomachs, they'll actually be able to tune in for the day. And I know that federal school lunch is something that's gonna particularly help out kids who are experiencing homelessness, well, not exclusively them. Obviously, breakfast and, and breakfast is something else that the district does and that's even, also maybe even more important because, of course, kids are showing up, especially if they're homeless, they're showing up with empty stomachs and so they're tuned out for the whole day. After-school activities, again, I'll repeat that the Full Service Community Schools directly is there partly to address this very problem of homelessness in the school population. I get very frustrated sometimes, though, when I see so many other elements of our society refuse to step up. So housing affordability doesn't get dealt with, and food insecurity doesn't get dealt with by entities outside of our schools. There, there's been systemic neglect of these populations in all those other domains at state level, at national level, and I get tired of, of our community sitting back and saying, "We're not gonna do anything about this," and saying, "So schools, you take this on, you solve the problem." I don't think it's, I think it's an awful lot to dump on the schools that are trying to do a lot of other things. And, and I, that, that said, I think the, the school system should do everything it can for this group of kids. I'm concerned, as Dr. Kirby says, that that's not necessarily going to be enough if the rest of our society doesn't step up and also start addressing these problems.
Thank you. Candidate Oswald.
Thank you. Federal law in the McKinney-Vento Act requires that all school districts have homeless students remain at the original school that they've been enrolled at. So even if they're placed in, and they're lucky enough to find temporary housing and being placed in motels in Superior, which often happen and is across state lines, MDE allows us to go and get them on school buses and bring them to their schools that they've been registered at. That's a fairly, fairly common thing, but what do you do with the kids during school? I mean, yeah, we're giving them food, you know, they're gonna get there, they're gonna have breakfast, they're gonna have lunch, they might get, you know, a backpack program of, of food for the weekends. But what I think we lack and we can try harder is with the addition of elementary school counselors. We used to have them way long ago and they've been eliminated in budget cuts and we have some of the worst counseling ratios in the nation, especially for high school students. But at the elementary level, the, the kids are especially vulnerable because their safest, most predictable space is at school. That's the only thing they can count on and then they have no place where they can freely express themselves because when they stay, when they're safe and they feel comfortable, that's when they're able to express themselves and, you know, maybe a little disruptive, may have a hard time processing feelings and that sort of stuff and, and it's tough and they need a safe space and a person in their corner to help deal with what's going on outside of the classrooms and outside of school.
Thank you. We have plenty more questions to go, but we were hoping to get some from the audience here that we could be asking, but yeah, if they're, I'm gonna keep going with what we have until some come up here. So next question. What changes would you make in supportive staffing? Candidate Oswald.
What changes would I make in supportive staffing is I would make sure that we have more. You know, we need more teachers, we need more supportive staff, but our budget can only absorb so many people. You know, I keep saying that, you know, we're in the people business and we need people in order to serve the people and to make great people in our community. It's all about the people. And so, yes, we need supportive staffing, we need teachers, and they all go in together. Teachers are burdened with, with doing more than ever in, in their classrooms with many more kids than we should have. And they step up to the plate every time and do the best thing they can, but to give them a qualified professional helper, you know, across grade levels, even if it could be one per grade level, you know, one per, you know, a couple of grade levels, whatever it is, if they had a, if they had dedicated help, our teachers could accomplish so much more. And so we really want to encourage as much people power, I guess we'd say, as we can get in our classrooms, whether it's qualified volunteers or, you know, paid staff would be ideal, but our money only goes so far.
Thank you. Candidate Schwetman.
The, the problem, as I see it, actually is something that's a little bit outside of the school board's jurisdiction and that's state funding, state per student funding that comes from St. Paul. And until that goes up, we're gonna be struggling with marginal changes to our own local budget here, including through the operating levies that I was supporting, that I supported earlier. And as, one thing I could do as a school board member, I would be eager to do if asked, would be to testify in St. Paul and tell stories about how things are in Duluth and how funding improvements to that state perfume, per student formula could make life better for, for kids all over our state. So that would be one, one thing, and that would improve staffing because of course, the staffing costs are a huge chunk of the, I think, I think I, it's like eighty percent of the school budget is people and the remaining twenty percent is everything else. Another thing, though, that no one's brought up, but maybe worth considering is that the staff jobs and the teaching jobs in our district are as appealing as they are because of the hard work of Duluth Federation of Teachers, AFSCME, and the Teamsters. I would oppose efforts to whittle away at the power of our teach, of our unions that are representing our, that are representing our employees, as has happened in other states. That makes the, the job less desirable and it makes the working conditions harder for people and it makes it less inviting. So I do, I do hope that, that we can see a strong collective bargaining as an element to improving the, the quality of life of staff and, and improving staff numbers.
Thank you. Candidate Welty.
When I was on the school board originally, nineteen ninety-six, Minnesota was about the fifth in terms of overall spending of the fifty states. We're, we're down about twenty-six now. It would be, it would be nice if we could blame all of the, the shortfall on the state of Minnesota, which obviously isn't where it was twenty years ago. But we imposed a, a building program and we ended up transferring about a hundred staff positions to paying off building bonds. There's no way the state is going to overcome that. And, and it hurts. The last year I was on the school board, twenty seventeen, our high school students were coming to us because they're aware of the anxieties that many kids seem to be facing these days, suicide, suicide, things like that. And we have so pathetically few counselors in the state of Minnesota and Duluth is even worse. And they came to the school board imploring us to provide them with counselors we had no money for. And, and I do recall a, one of the other school board members coming up and talking to the student representative for East High School, I believe, and giving him a lecture about, about how, you know, this isn't the, the responsibility of schools to, to help kids out. Yes, it is. I wish we had more money.
Thank you. And candidate Kirby.
Thanks. I think that I agree that we need more. I mean, that's, that is a no-brainer, really. And I think that counselors are one, paraprofessionals are especially important given our large, a large percentage of special education students we have, many of which require paraprofessionals. And this is both for the safety of the paraprofessionals who work with some of these children and well as for the learning opportunities that the paraprofessionals provide for the kids. We need more interventionists that will teach reading or math, more librarians, they're called media specialists now, for those of you who are in my H group, those kinds of things. And we need more help with technology, both in people who know how to use it and get trained for it. Teachers need to have the professional development for this. But we need that because of the technology requirements in the school, both in terms of hardware and software are tremendous. It's not the same as when I went to school or probably any of us went to school. It is so much different. So I think that we need more. One of the things that we can do is work to increase state funding, federal funding for special education. This takes a lot of our, lot of the dollars that we spend. And we do not have control over what we have to spend for a lot of that. So I think that we've worked with the state legislature to try and get Duluth specifically more money, but that's a statewide effort as well.
Thank you. And we have received a few audience questions now, so let's move on to those and let's keep our responses to one minute now. And we had quite a few heavy issues, so I'm gonna start with something a little bit more upbeat. What are two or three programs you believe are working well in the district? Candidate Kirby.
Oh, we have lots. Our Career Technical Education Department and efforts are doing very well. We have an aerospace physics class that's been instituted over the past, I don't know how many years now, that fills up for kids who don't like physics but have to take it or want to take it, and that's been great. The Teach Your Own program for getting kids of color and just generally into the, stay in the system is good. We have a, an immersion program in both Ojibwe and Spanish, which is very successful. In fact, at Lowell, I think there's only one English-speaking class in that school now. It's very successful. The Community School Collaborative Program is working very well and is a model for the state. So we have lots going on.
Thank you. Candidate Welty.
I agree with Dr. Kirby. We have a lot of things that are working well. I think one of the things that we have to be aware of is any child that comes from a healthy, well-financed, comfortable family that is invested and taking care of the child is likely, even in a substandard school, to have a kid who's going to be, you know, gonna graduate with, with all kinds of promise. As for the kind of programs that I like, you know, we, most of our elementary schools are, many of them are near woodlands and they, they have little forestry programs. I think that's fantastic. Kind of to my surprise, when I got on the school board in twenty thirteen, I found that we had a, a growing online school that we were trying to set up to attract people online, kids who wanted something other than a classroom experience. And from what I hear, it's growing and succeeding quite nicely. So those are a couple of hundreds of good programs.
Thank you. Candidate Oswald.
Thank you. First of all, I think we have really top-notch athletic teams and music programs, arts and art shows, theater productions, you know, they're fantastic. And I don't know that, you know, anything regionally can compare to what those offerings are. I think that the, the program that I, I can't remember what it is, is where the upper students mentor the incoming ninth graders, I think at Denfeld it's called Link Crew and I forget what it's called in East, but they're, yeah, they, they, those are fantastic opportunities for, for growing community. I've already mentioned Check and Connect, Key Zone After School programs, PBIS, Positive Behavioral Intervention Systems that celebrate the good things kids are doing in schools, PLC Times for professional learning communities for teachers to be able to connect with each other and discuss the needs of students and how to reach them all. ADSIS is a reading program intervention that helps marginalized people just below the line catch up.
Thank you. And candidate Schwetman.
I mean, we've already heard about a lot of programs and I, I'd probably repeat most, many of those. Career and tech, tech education certainly shows signs of being really exemplary program. And the, the Teach Your Own idea makes a lot of sense. It seems like a very sensible program that has a lot of potential. Grow Your Own. I, one of the other couple of things that didn't get mentioned yet, which are also worth, a horn worth tooting, would be the in-school gardens that were spearheaded by Renee Willamson. And we have, a lot of our schools now have gardens as part of the grounds and they're expanding to other schools. I think it's really important that we teach kids a new way to understand food, where it comes from and how it can be healthy. And that ties nicely to the Culinary Arts Program. I understand the Denfeld Culinary Arts Program actually cooked food for a visiting dignitary last week, which is so completely awesome. I think we, we should, as a society, put more energy into teaching our kids about what healthy food looks like and where healthy food comes from. So I wanted to, wanted to mention that on top of all the other great programs that we have in the district.
Thank you. Next question. What is the status of Central High School property? Is the school board doing enough to successfully develop this property into a valuable asset for the community? Candidate Welty.
I'll tell you, that, that has been vexatious since we were promised that it would fetch twenty-nine million dollars and help pay for the Red Plan and here it is, having sat for ten years costing a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars to heat and maintain, that's, that's a couple of million dollars. It's two teachers every year wasted on, on that building that's smoldering. At an earlier forum today, Alana suggested that maybe that's where our administration could go. That's an interesting idea. And I was told by the superintendent not long ago that we could sell Old Central for a song and whoever bought it would have to maintain it, maintain it according to the regulations of the National Historic Preservation Act. I have a somewhat different view. I'm guessing that someday in the future, we're gonna have a lot of people coming to Duluth. And when I first got on the board, we had a lot of vacant ground for something like the Red Plan. Maybe we should just keep that property and, and, and level the school and wait for that time.
Thank you. Candidate Schwetman.
Well, I mean, yeah, clearly the status of Central High School is that it's, it's on, on the books and it's costing us, costing the district money to maintain and no one has purchased it yet. My sense of this Central High School building is that it's, it's a product of a particular historical moment when we like to build very overs, highly specialized buildings that are hard to adapt to other uses. And so what you have with Central High School is a building that's just very difficult to change. It's a big, I call it a big tinder block, a cinder block box. And so it's, it's not gonna just sell off to people who wanna turn it into something else easily. In fact, it'll probably cost whoever buys it two point five million dollars just to level to the ground. Another way that the Central High School building is difficult is that it was built at a time when we just thought we'd drive everywhere. And so the transit issues for getting to that building are extreme, they always were. It was always, always challenging to get students up there after hours. And so those are two, two issues that are gonna continually kind of, kind of be associated with the issues of trying to sell the building. I hope that the district can sell the building, but I know, I know that it's a very real challenge and it's not necessarily district fault that didn't, that didn't sell already.
Thank you. Candidate Oswald.
Thank you. Well, it's actively on the market. If you want me to do something, I'll do a sign and dance, but I mean, if they'll sell it, I will, I will do it, kinda thing. There are other challenges, you know, it's seventy-eight acres or so, but only like less than thirty of it is actually usable. There's water runoff problems. If we were to level it and then it all get developed, I understand that if all the housing built on the hill would flood every rain, every storm because there, it would just run right down the hill without stopping. There's critical, I wanna say rain gardens, but it's not exactly rain gardens, in those spaces that prevent the runoff from just running straight downhill. I, and earlier today, I did suggest the, the administration move there, but I, what more I said was that we slap a, a garage door on the building and make it a bus barn because we're in desperate need of a facility to house our buses and most places in the cold have, have bus barns. And we need to revamp our busing facilities and we don't have money to do that, so why not use what we have?
Okay. And candidate Kirby.
Thanks. Well, part of the site is being used by the Facilities Department of the school district. We've, we, the district is, has a professional real estate firm now actively marketing that, whereas before it was mostly the district and we are not in the real estate business. We have state and city cooperation about this. As Member Oswald, there's, mentioned, there's, it's a difficult site to build something else on and it's going to take a new road, it's going to take some infrastructure. And I was one of some that went down to the state legislature and in fact, had cooperation from the state to provide a five million dollar tax rebate for whoever was going to develop that. I think that got lost in the omnibus bill later. But those efforts have been, been made. And we'd like to have it on the tax rolls. So if it is used by a non-educational area, it will be on the tax rolls.
Thank you, candidates, for your very thoughtful answers to all of our questions. At this time, we'll ask each candidate to give a one-minute closing statement. And we will begin with candidate Schwetman.
All right. Well, thank you all. Thank you again, Legal Women Voters and Lakeside Community Club. I'm just gonna stand up so I can see you all. Hi, everybody. Back room. I've, since I started my campaign in June, I've had lots of conversations with people all over the district and all over IST 709, I get a real sense of incredible variety of viewpoints and attitudes towards, towards the district, what people are getting out of it and what they need. It's been extremely invigorating. And, you know, I understand too that, that there is conflict on the school board and as I said earlier, I think conflict is not necessarily a bad thing. Conflict can be productive. It's a way to work ourselves towards consensus or at least towards some kind of compromise. If there's conflict on the school board at times, it's because we have a very diverse community and there's genuine conflict at the community level as well. So I wanna appraise the existing school board for all the great work that it has done to manage conflict as well as it has. And I hope that I can be a part of the future school board that can continue to work through conflict productively and seek some kind of consensus and, and keep building on the successes of our district. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Oswald.
Thank you. I just wanna take a second to reflect on Mr. Schwetman's comments, because I haven't experienced the conflict that he's exactly referring to. I'm not really sure what that is, because I've enjoyed my last two years on the board, and I think that we've gotten along fabulously, you know. Disagreement's going to happen, but conflict hasn't, which is interesting. I just wanna say that, you know, I wanna be on the school board because I'm about equity, and I believe in everyone having a say in what we need to do and how we need to do it. Education belongs to everyone here, period. The end, and you need to advocate, if you need to advocate for yourself and run into roadblocks, that's who I am. I'll help you figure it out. I'm about advocating for people and accountability, because I want us to use our money wisely. So when we do come to you, we can honestly say we need the money, and this is what it's gonna be used for, and you can trust us, because that's what it's all about.
Thank you, candidate Kirby.
Thank you. Although I represent the second district by voting, I think that I do, and most of us, represent the entire school, entire school district. We're interested in everybody and every, everything. However, the second district is becoming much more diverse than it was when I moved here twenty years ago, and Comden Elementary is not the same school it was when my kids went there, neither is East. And I think that people who have not been in the schools recently don't realize that. What I'd like to do, if I'm elected again, is bring other levels of government and the community into the picture more. We have to work together. The schools cannot solve everything. I think we're, maybe we can do better, but we're doing pretty well with the money we have. We'd like more, but I'd like a lot more people to be involved in what we do.
And candidate Welty.
You perhaps have read the headlines and saw that we have 21 people applying to replace Josh Gorem, who stepped down with a little bit of angst not long ago. Well, there are only six of us here for three spots. That must tell you that people view the idea of running for public office rather onerous than the idea of being selected quickly by a friendly school board seems much, much more agreeable. You know, all the people I've ever met who were school board members, and I've met, if not thousands of them, hundreds of them, always have the best interests of children at heart. That's all of us. Sometimes we have disagreements about how that gets done, but I will always try to remember those children, should I be elected, and get along with all the people I have to on the school board. It's what I've always tried to do, not always as successful as I'd like. But think of the kids first.
Thank you. This concludes our candidate forum for the District Two and at-large positions for the Duluth School Board. It is our purpose in sponsoring such a forum to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss issues that are important to you face-to-face. There's never enough time to cover all of the issues in limited time such as this. So if your questions were not addressed, please feel free to contact the candidates directly. And we hope that this program has helped you learn a little bit more about each of the candidates and the issues, so you can make an informed choice at the polls on Election Day, Tuesday, November 5th. We thank the candidates for their participation, and Lakeside-Luster Park Community Club, the Duluth PTA Council, the PACT TV, the Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation, and you for making this event possible. Thank you for coming, and remember to vote. The PACT TV will be carrying this forum and others, so check their listings for a schedule of times. And don't be running away, because in just a few minutes, there will be another forum on the city council. Thank you.